And passes unanimously. So, thank you guys for all being here. Um, it's, I think it's, I, I really like. Okay, it is Thursday, October twenty second, two thousand twenty-two, and I will call this joint work session with the Lacey City Council and North Thurston Public School Board of Directors meeting to order. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Would this anybody want a second, please?
Second.
Is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, please say aye.
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 That motion passes unanimously. So, thank you, everybody, for being here now that we are recording. Uh, we, we, um, we enjoy this opportunity to, to have, you know, North Thurston Public School Board, uh, here with the city of Lacey so that we can discuss our different things that we have in common, uh, and the different things that we are working on individually and how they might coincide. So, uh, with that, uh, we'll just do some quick introductions. And, uh, I'll start and we'll just take off this way and come back around if that's okay. My name is Malcolm Miller. I am the deputy mayor, city of Lacey.
Graham Sacreson, Froggy Voice, uh, North Thurston School Board.
Gretchen Maliska, North Thurston School Board.
Carolyn Cox, Lacey City Council.
Troy Oliver, uh, Assistant Superintendent of North Thurston.
Uncle City Council.
Tiffany Seberg, North Thurston Schools.
Robin Vasquez, Lacey City Council.
Deborah Clemens, North Thurston Public Schools Superintendent.
Dave Newkirk, North Thurston Public Schools President.
Okay, and for the record, Mayor Ryder couldn't be here tonight. Councilmember Greenstein was unable to attend and Councilmember Stedman, uh, is out of the country. So, uh, with that, uh, I, I guess we can just move into our, our agenda items. Uh, and it looks like we will be receiving a presentation from Troy Oliver. I can introduce the agenda item if you like. This agenda item is our North Thurston Public Schools Young Child and Family Center update. And we're presenting is Troy Oliver, Assistant Superintendent of Operations at North Thurston Public Schools and Jen Burbage, Director of Parks, Culture and Recreation for the city of Lacey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just gonna pull up the document real quick here for our presentation. Take it a moment.
Want to go to the other one down? PDF.
Aha. Think John already got it set up for us. Thank you, John.
You have a preference if I present from here or seated, or does it matter?
Before you start, the screen is not being shared with the viewers at home.
Thank you. I will do that.
So Troy, maybe you wanna come back where Ed is sitting. I'm not sure if the video is what, how the video is capturing who's in the room for people online.
We'll get out of there.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. What am I doing? Okay, hold on. The PDF and then, but see when I go to share.
Share and click the PDF.
Not coming up as an option. Try one more time here. Oops, not that one. Apologies for the delay here.
No worries.
It should be an option right here. Yeah. Does anybody know how to?
Try to open it up. Um, you can see where the file is actually saved right now, but, um, try to reopen it through.
End drive? I figured you'd be coming in.
How about that? Is that it?
There we go.
Yay.
Thanks, John. Alright, apologies for the delay. Um.
Yeah, don't go too far. So, uh, yeah, we, uh, Jen and I would, um, pleased this evening to, uh, take the opportunity to, uh, give an update to, um, both school boards and the Lacey City Council, um, the work we've been doing on our Young Child and Families, um, Center, uh, for Lacey, this concept that we've been working on. Um, so, couple different things. If I advance the slide there, Jen. Alright, so, in terms of some background, why, why would we be embarking on this, this project? And, and not only, um, is it between City of Lacey, North Thurston Public Schools, but also the YMCA has been very involved in this process, as well as some other, um, key stakeholders in our, in our community. So, first of all, um, it does align with, uh, North Thurston Public Schools', uh, strategic plan, goal one, which is success in the early years. Um, we currently have, um, three early learning centers at our, uh, three of our elementary schools. Those are Mountain View, Meadows, and Pleasant Glade. And we have an early learning program at Seven Oaks Elementary School. So that's four of our thirteen elementary schools. Um, we've expanded, um, the, the E cap slots available in our community as well as partnering, um, with, uh, parent preschool co-op and providing a site, um, out in the Nisqually Middle School campus, um, for head start. So those are some things that we have done up to this point, but one thing we know is we're serving about fifty percent of the students in our community who are preschool age, um, that actually could benefit from and would need services with these programs. So we're, we're significantly short in terms of, um, the number of opportunities for, for, uh, students and families in our communities. Next slide. Um, so we do know there's learning, um, early learning gaps. We talk about, when, when I just talk about the fifty percent, talking about a child, childcare desert. In other words, there's, there's some significant gaps, um, in our community. And I don't know if that's necessarily, um, unique to, to North Thurston or the city of Lacey, but it certainly is, um, noted here. Um, COVID nineteen and the pandemic has exacerbated this issue, um, with, uh, student needs, student preparation, um, for quality preschool programs. We know that a lot of our, um, childcare providers throughout the community didn't make it through the pandemic and are no longer, um, providing services. Um, so we're working towards a, a multi-agency approach, um, being creative with our partnerships, again with the YMCA. Um, they're uniquely positioned to be in a, a, a great partner in this project beyond the early learning pieces, but also in terms of, um, family, uh, recreation, both indoor and outdoor, that is also, um, a significant gap. And then Lacey Parks and their public outreach, um, has done a lot of research and there's a lot of interest in our community and those, those outreaches, as Jen has shared with us, um, for spray parks, splash pad, outdoor, indoor, um, facilities for, um, for families and, uh, young children to take advantage of. So again, um, just the who, and the three major partners that are embarking on this, this project, again, North Thurston Public Schools, uh, the La, City of Lacey, and then the YMCA as well. And Kyle Kronk, who has been at previous, um, Lacey City Council meetings, talking briefly about this, um, was gonna be here tonight. He had a conflict, so, um, Kyle would have otherwise been here as well. So Jen, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, yeah. So I'll talk about the what just a little bit. Um, and as Troy alluded to, with the creative partnerships, uh, coming up with innovative solutions. We know that there are unique learning needs of kids ages three to five, and that they need opportunities inside and outside of the classroom. Uh, we also know that, uh, some of their unique needs are also to have really that support system of family and to have that system be well, um, along with the kids and having physical activity and, you know, educational opportunities. Uh, and so, uh, wrapping that in, and then also the aquatic safety component is huge. We live, you know, around a lot of lakes and, um, open water and streams and rivers and creeks, and, and it's really important for kids to learn, um, how to swim and in a safe indoor environment. There's outdoor lessons as well, but, um, it really is nice when they're nice and warm and they can really learn in a good, um, good environment. And then, um, also considering the indoor spaces that are desired by the community. Again, Troy alluded to that, but we've been doing a lot of outreach, um, with the update of our, uh, Lacey Parks Comprehensive Plan. And so, um, indoor spaces are desired since it does rain quite a bit here. Um, and also considering the best use of that, you know, Bucknell or Nisqually property and how to engage that, uh, for the community as it has been in the past. It's been engaged, uh, it, you know, it used to be ball fields. Um, and it's a space that, you know, the community really wants to get back onto. So slightly different way of engaging the community, but still that engagement, um, in an active way. And then looking at extending the school day, uh, as I mentioned before, you know, opportunities for physical wellness and educational classes, um, potentially mental, um, health, you know, type of, uh, resources for families. And looking at the site, this is an aerial view. I think that you've all seen this before, but there's Marvin Road, um, you can see Nisqually Middle School, just to get your bearings on the location. And what could go potentially into a facility is up to six hundred, or excuse me, early learning classrooms to serve six hundred students annually. Um, family-friendly parenting and nutrition classes, onsite potential medical partner, mental health services, as I just mentioned, um, a family-oriented pool that has, uh, you know, play features, potentially lazy river, um, an indoor playground, outdoor spray park, as Troy mentioned, and then potentially outdoor adventure playground. Um, here are some sketches that the school district had put together. So this could be, um, what the exterior of the building could look like. This is Marvin Road right here, just to give you your, um, your bearings there. And you see Nisqually Middle School back here. Um, this is a sketch of an indoor gathering space. This could be, um, you know, just social time for families and, uh, multi-generational, or something more structured. Um, you can see the indoor play space there in the background. This is a sketch of what an outdoor spray park feature could look like. So these, these types of structures would, you know, spray out water and same with these here. And this is what a sketch of the indoor pool could look like. So it has a zero-depth entry, uh, and some play features. And this is a sketch of what an indoor playground could look like. Different, you know, challenge features for different age groups. Um, and lots of just open space and, and space for families really to come in when it's raining and, and be able to, um, have that real active time. And with that, I'm gonna pass it back over to Troy.
Yeah, so in terms of our, our next steps, we're gonna continue conversations. We've been meeting monthly with a, a, a large, a larger group to include the members that we talked about before from the city of Lacey, the YMCA, North Thurston Public Schools, talking about, um, how to put this together, what it looks like, what are the roles of each of the, the entities as we, as we, um, continue going forward. Um, we want to also engage with our military community, um, and see, and medical providers, the Economic Development Council, um, other essential partners to really make this a holistic, um, um, body of work that really can support, um, students and families in a variety of different ways and bring in multiple entities to this, um, to this project. Um, the, uh, we're also looking at the, um, the updated Lacey City Parks or Comprehensive Plan. Um, they've been bringing that to table and sharing some of the work there. And then a big piece for us is just for reviewing potential funding sources and how each of the entities can come to the table and, and, um, participate in that. Um, whether it be the YMCA really taking maybe the lead on going out and really finding some, some private, uh, donations and private partnerships, looking at state grants, looking at federal grants. That's where the military can really come in and be a, a, a significant, um, so, sort of, uh, partner in this area, um, supporting the kids in our community that are military, um, connected. Um, and then North Thurston Public Schools is considering, um, what, what a capital levy look like to support this project. Cause big picture, um, we're looking at it roughly a seventy million dollar project going forward. So trying to figure out how to pull that together, um, with a variety of different funding sources. Um, of course, the nor, the, uh, ci- North Thurston Public Schools really be responsible for, um, the learning part of it and then working with the, the why in the city for some of those other pieces that we just shared, um, that has a lot of potential. So we're excited about the project and we'll continue to, to move forward. And again, we're meeting monthly. I think our next meeting is, uh, next week. So we're continuing to do this work. So with that, I will stop and we can do our best to answer any questions.
Jimmy, please.
What kind of, you have a time horizon, excuse me, that you're looking at?
So I think for the, for the district, if we decide to move forward with the capital levy, that would be, um, in February of twenty-four would, would be, we'd, we'd go with that levy. So it'd be, after that would be the time where we could actually have some resources to, um, to put forth. We're trying to figure out right now, there's grants, both state and federal that are available. We're trying to figure out the timing to go out and start to, um, go after those grants and secure those. So the timing, we're in the infancy of, of putting all those pieces together. But for the district, a key point would be, um, that February of twenty-four, and then the subsequent tax collection, potentially if we decide to go down that road.
Couple of years after that, before it would actually get built and be running?
Yeah, um, as, and you'll see later, we're, we're right in the middle of some major construction projects and some of those can, can take more, many years depending on, um, a variety of different factors.
Please don't raise your hands. Just talk. I, I am not a dictator. Thank you.
It's a work session. Yeah. Um, you mentioned some outdoor features. Is the intent there that those would be limited access or public access?
Public access.
Oh, park-like.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, nice. Free.
Yeah, go.
I was just gonna speak to part of that childcare issue. Uh, the woman across the street had a childcare business until COVID. Uh, whoa, a family down the block had a childcare business and it's closed. So we have a real problem of what do you do and who can provide services? And so I think this is a nice way to combine forces and opportunities and resources and put together a program that can do well. So just an observation, having watched it.
So this is like a childcare center as well as an early learning center, as well as a public park, as well as it's, it checks a lot of boxes.
Yeah.
Did I miss the dollar figure? We anticipate this costing, uh?
Yeah, it's, uh, the estimate is seventy million dollars.
And that's everything. That's construction and all the soft costs.
Is that today's cost?
No, that includes the acceleration.
Okay.
Yeah. And, um, the district already owns the property.
Is there a way for it to produce income, like the Lacey Community Center, they have rental facilities? I know, okay, so that is in the plans.
Yeah, um, the, yes, the pool component would definitely, um, need to generate revenue to support the operations and maintenance of the building.
And the model that this center is kind of, um, built off of, although the one in Tacoma didn't have a pool, uh, they actually generated quite a bit of funding through hosting birthday parties and special events for families. So, and I think that went back into the park and recreation budget to help pay operating costs.
What was the budget for this project again?
Seventy.
Seventy million? Uh, and how much of that is gonna be a public ask?
So, we're still in the process of identifying all of the different funding sources, but this is an identified need both at the federal and state level.
Well, I understand it's, and I'm just curious to know how much do we anticipate is gonna be a public ask?
We're, we're still working on that part. Yeah. We're, we're not quite that far along. Um, I think one of the wonderful things about this partnership is we're all identifying possible funding sources so that the dollar amount that the school district needs to go and ask voters to support is the least possible or the least necessary.
Well, I don't know how long this is. I mean, this is long overdue and sorely needed, uh, especially for a lot of our military families in, in this community. Um, we know that we're short on childcare. We know that we're, we're short on early learning. We know that we're short on all these things. So, um, it, I, I'm, I'm really hopeful that I, uh, you know, funding sources, um, you know, get identified so that we can at least try to find some path forward. I know that's not an overnight thing. If I could write a check for seventy million dollars, I would write it. Because I think that's how important this, this is. Uh, and I hope it's not the only one that we're able to stand up um, for, for these, for this, for this community, for this county, um, because we're, we're falling behind.
Yeah, I agree with that, Malcolm. Um, you couldn't have stated any better saying this is long overdue. I grew up in this community. We didn't have anything like this. We've been needing it since day one. Um, and you talked about military communities. Every military base has a youth service center. They have them for a reason because it helps all the youth on the base and they feel connected and it builds them for the future. So I, I do want, hope we can work together and find ways to, to make this happen and fund it moving forward. I do think, like you said, that there's a lot of grants and stuff we can qualify for, especially on the federal side, because they always want something like this in the communities to help build that camaraderie with those kids, especially the military kids. So yeah, it's nothing but positive things from this.
Well, if, uh, if nobody else has anything, then, um, thank you, Troy, for presenting and then Jen. Um, I really, I really like this idea and, and the thought of us being able to do this for, for the community. Um, let's just hope that it works out, you know, the way we, the way we see it working out. And, uh, with that, we'll move on to our next, um, agenda item, uh, in which will be a development update from our, for Lacey Community. Uh, Brick Walk, the Director of Community and Economic Development, will be presenting. Uh, Rick will be presenting on Zoom.
Well, good evening, everybody, and, uh, thank you for the introduction. Uh, I was asked tonight to just kind of give a broad overview of some of the development activity that is occurring in the Lacey community, uh, especially related to residential development. So I prepared a few slides and, um, and then, uh, we can open up for any questions that you may might have. Um, starting out, I just wanna kind of highlight, um, the, uh, the amount of, uh, residential activity we have been seeing since, uh, about twenty fifteen. And this, as this chart shows, uh, we have a kind of a shift in where the housing market has been turning to over the last, um, four or five years. The, uh, the yellow represents single-family, uh, home permits and the blue represents multifamily units permitted. And so if you look at, uh, going back to twenty fifteen, uh, we've had about one thousand five hundred, uh, single-family homes that would have been permitted and constructed or under construction. And then, uh, multifamily, we've had about two thousand two hundred and sixteen units. Uh, this is a, a big shift in our development activity, uh, in the Lacey community. Uh, going back to the year two thousand, from two thousand fourteen, to kind of give you perspective, uh, we, uh, permitted, uh, just over five thousand five hundred single-family homes and about seven hundred multifamily units. So as our community has grown, we have a lot of single-family home production, uh, got to the point where all the available land left was more of the multifamily infield. So you're now, now seeing that market shift to that multifamily. And there is, this causes a lot of concern when you see that blue in that last four or five years, the amount of units being built. Uh, every, uh, looks at that as a dom at the market, but if you look at it over the last twenty years, we're still starting to get more variety of housing within the Lacey community. So, uh, just in two, two thousand, uh, just in this year-to-date of twenty twenty-two, uh, the permitting activity has, uh, continued with about thirty-eight single-family homes and about a hundred ninety-seven multifamily units. And I'll just go through and highlight a few of the, the projects in and around town and under multifamily. Of course, this won't represent everything, but I just want to give a little bit of sense of the type of development that's been occurring. Uh, so this first project I want to highlight is the Serenity Apartments. It is located, um, on Carpenter Road between Martin Way and Pacific Avenue, on the east side of Carpenter Road. And this is an eighty-two unit apartment complex, and it's one of the first of its type of units in our area. It's, it's actually building in live-working units on the ground floor. And this, these are units that are looking to, uh, provide space for, uh, home office or businesses while they have, uh, living quarters in the, uh, second floor or the other parts of the unit. Uh, this project also will have, uh, a retail on the corner. Uh, coffee shop is planning to go into that location. And, uh, again, it's a project that's been, uh, identified as a kind of new to the market in terms of that work, work-live unit. Moving to the north of, uh, of I five, off of Fifteenth Avenue Northeast, uh, is the Magera Apartments Project. Uh, this is a, a three hundred and forty-six multifamily unit project along with, uh, twenty-three single-family homes that's being constructed. Uh, and again, this is occurring on Fifteenth Avenue. And part of that's project will be installing fringe improvements and expanding the, uh, its fringe along Fifteenth Avenue. And eventually that, uh, roadway will continue to be improved as development occurs to, uh, to its full cross-section. Further to the north, uh, is the Griffin Apartments. This project is just off of Thirty-second Avenue, uh, just west of Marvin Road. Marvin Road would be off to the, the right of the screen. And this is a, uh, hundred and eighty-three, hundred and eighty-three unit project that has broken ground this year. And again, it's, it's filling in some of these areas of, of our, uh, community that have been designated for some time for some more higher density development. Uh, the South Bay Village Apartments, this is a project that, right at the, uh, intersection of Hoxbury Road and Marvin Road. If you, uh, you recall that there's an AMPM, uh, 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 gas station and convenience store at the corner. Uh, this is actually filling in some of our community commercial designation into a mixed-use project. And they're gonna be building a hundred and forty-four units, uh, in six buildings. Uh, as part of this project in the site, they are also building additional commercial paths along the Mar, uh, the fringe of Marvin Road, which will include a daycare and, and a, uh, a professional office. And so we're starting to see some of more mixed use in our neighborhood service areas, uh, adding more services as well as residential opportunities to. Now, the next wave of projects are the ones that haven't, uh, broken ground under construction, but they are, will be considered in the pipeline. These are projects that have received or in the, or have received either land use approval or in the land use, uh, review process. Uh, the first project I want to highlight, uh, is on Britton Parkway. Uh, here's Britton Parkway running east-west. It's called the Britton Place North. It's a thirty-acre parcel just north of, uh, of Britton. And this project is proposing five hundred and, uh, fifty, uh, unit apartment complex. And as you, uh, you drive to Britton Corridor, you know that there's the, on the south side, the, uh, Britton Place Apartments, and then also the Gateway, uh, subdivision, as well as the, uh, multifamily right there at Gateway and Britton Parkway. So you're starting to see the north side of the, uh, freeway starting to continue to build out for the city's comprehensive plans. A project, uh, of East Martin Way, um, in the proximity of River Ridge High School, which is in the center and the bottom of the screen. Uh, on the north side of Martin Way East is a project called, uh, Homes on Martin. And this is, uh, one of our, uh, newer, uh, urban residential projects. It's a five-story mixed-use building with ground-floor retail. Uh, gonna have ninety-six dwelling units on the upper floors. The other part, nice thing about this project too, is that in order to achieve some of it, the density it's achieving, is it had to do some, um, uh, sustainability, uh, design into the project. So they're gonna have, uh, solar panels on the roof. They're going to have, uh, uh, high-energy efficient HVAC systems. It's gonna be built to a, uh, lead silver equivalent and they'll have electric vehicle charging stations for their patrons, as well as, um, uh, ride-share electric bikes for them to be able to travel up and down the corridor, uh, on short trips. So that's another project that we're excited to see, if they see, uh, great ground in the coming year. Uh, the, another project is also, uh, on Carpenter Road, but on the south side of Pacific Avenue. It's a Carpenter Road Apartments. It's located right on the Bennett Carpenter, uh, road across the street from the, uh, the school district, uh, bus facility or transportation facility. And that's a project that's going to be about seventy-eight units in size, uh, comprised of three buildings and, uh, and filling in the area between the Ruland Center and the adjacent subdivision to the, to the, uh, west. Uh, you've also probably heard in the, and over the last summer, there's, uh, two multifamily projects adjacent to Hicks Lake. It's the Hicks Lake Apartments and the Gateway Hicks Lake. And they're located just off of Hicks Lake. And Gateway Hicks Lake and they're located just off of Hicks Lake Road. On the west side of Hicks Lake and the Hicks Lake Apartments will be about hundred and seventy eight units. And the the Gateway at Hicks Lake is comprised about a hundred and thirty two units and sixteen buildings. And as those projects, sites develop. They will also include roadway improvements, improve the roadways and sidewalks all the way up to twenty twenty fifth. To the bus stop as well as improvements along the furnishes of the launches park and and the boat lodge. So that's the kind of a snapshot of a lot of the multifamily. And I just want to take a little bit of opportunity to highlight some of the commercial activity that we're seeing. Around town. We have the the tech equipment project. This is a. A project that's occurring north of I five on Marvin Road just past. Willamette Drive across from the Providence Medical Center. This vacant parcel has taken the north half of the property and tech equipment is developing their. Their facility. Tech Equipment is the largest west coast dealership. They sell new and used Mack and Volvo semi tractors. As well as provide services and parts. On the south half of the property, they own, they're going to be developing out out paths that will eventually be commercial type uses. Framing the intersection of Marvin Road and Willamette. Across the the street of that site is the Hogan Bay Town Center Project. This is a mixed use project. It's going to include about three hundred and fifty residential units with some ground floor retail. And over sixty thousand square feet of retail, food service and general commercial type uses. This is something that's been talked about quite a bit in the community. It's the project site of the twenty three kitchens, restaurant and pickleball courts. And as you can see from this architectural ending. They'll have. I believe, six outdoor pickleball courts and and five indoor pickleball courts. Rooftop seating and combining recreation as well as. Food and beverage in one spot. And I know there's been a lot of talk about this project in the community, so we're excited for it to. Come forward in the next year. Some of the projects that are currently under construction are significant for the city of Lacey. As we know, the Sears retail building. Has been vacant for some time. We now have a a project coming in. It's going to be the future location of At Home. Furniture and home furnishing store. They're going to be filling in the little notch in the existing Sears building. And currently remodeling the facility to open up in the, in about a year's time. Also, in the. Within Square Midtown District, we have the Multi Care Off Campus Emergency Department that's going to be developing. At the corner of Golf Club Road and Pacific Avenue. This is a project on about ten thousand square feet in the first phase. And it's received its land use approval and now they're working on their site development plans. And you may notice that they've been doing some demolition work of the three existing. Vacant house structures on the property. Jumping out back north. Long Britain Parkway again. We have the Olympia Orthopedics at the Hickory, which is one of Olympia Orthopedics going to open up another clinic so location. Out there north along Marvin Road and Britain Parkway. And then right next to that, we. Have issued land use approval for the Marriott Hotel at Britain Plaza, which the Marriott is looking to construct a. A residence in at that location. So that's a quick snapshot of some of the development activity that has been occurring. Over the last year, kind of an idea of what we have in the pipeline, especially for residential projects. And so happy to respond to any questions that the the council or the the board has tonight.
Rick, Britain Parkway, what's the current road condition there? Is it? Going to need to be widened to support all that additional traffic?
Britain Parkway, one of the. The aspects of our our transportation plans, our land use plans, as we look at future development capacity. So Britain Parkway. Is expanded to its full capacity up to from Marvin Road to Gateway Boulevard. And as you head westbound. You know that one of the lanes will drop. As these projects come on, they will actually complete the the full width, the the five lane section. As they add their projects or or complete their projects along the corridor. So eventually that will have a full length corridor all the way from. Marvin Road to Carpenter. Also, we, the city of Lacey does have plans in our transportation program for improvements at Carpenter and Britain. To install a new intersection. So that's something too that the city will be a city project at some point in the future, once we get all the grant funding secured.
Hey, Rick. On that project on Fifteenth. You said that, I think you said there was some somewhere in in the neighborhood, three hundred and seventy six units. But i- if I remember right, when we, when we approved that project, there was, there was also a twenty three single family residences. That was supposed to be part of that project. Are they still part of that project?
Yes, there is a, so off of Century Court and Century Place is a road that. Tees into the side or the west side of the project. There will be twenty three single family lots as part of that multifamily project. So there's two, two. Housing types within that project. You are correct, Deputy Mayor.
So I got a quick question as well. So are you gonna look at Roundabout or Stoplight on Fifteenth and Slater County? Cause that thing gets backed up now. I can't imagine getting all those cars in there.
That is a, that is a. Intersection that the city and the county has been looking at for quite some time and and monitoring it. And it's actually an intersection that's in. Thurston County's jurisdiction. So there is a project further north on Slater Kenny that has triggered improvements to Fifteenth and Slater Kenny. So the county and and the city of Lacey is working. Collaborate on a design requirement for that project to install a signal and also expand left turn movements off of Fifteenth onto Slater Kenny to. Improve that level of service at that location.
Thanks. That one kind of reminds you of, is it Thirty Seventh and Wiggins? They're both kind of one of those. It can get sticky.
It's, it's a, it's a project that, like I said, it's on the radar. The Fifteenth Avenue Quarter is a regional quarter as well. So at some point, the the county. And the city will look at upgrading the full length of Fifteenth Avenue. And right now, we're looking at that intersection as as development occurs.
Yeah, because I see that that growth on that side of a Lacy is is being similar to what happened. You know, when we expanded Lacey Boulevard and Pacific and we made up one ways. So you got that going on, then you got Martin Way. So on the other side is going to be Britain Parkway and Fifteenth, you know, it runs that way. So eventually it's going to have to get to. Some kind of huge roadway getting to that area. As you keep developing out there, obviously.
That is correct. And as you, you know, as we watch the the growth occur out in that location, this is all been planned growth through the conferency plans. It started our conferency planning processes under GMA in the early nineties. And part of that is looking at utility extensions, transportation corridors. Environmental protections as development occurs. And as we've been building, as the development has occurred out in that northeast area, you've been, you've been seeing also east west extensions. Thirty first from Hogan Bay to Marvin, and now it's been extended further west from Marvin to Gateway Boulevard. You're starting to see that grid, the arterial system being built out as that development according to the the city's conferency plans.
I was really excited to hear about the renewable energy project that you're building into the apartment complex. I'd love to see more of that. I think that that's a real demand. And as we continue to grow in the city of Lacey. And bring on more humans, we need to offset that with renewable energy and and innovation. So well done on that. And is it safe to assume that we have multiple price points with all of the new building that we're considering and projecting?
The. The price points are all market based, so we don't have any of those projects or not. Do I have any type of lower income type units? So you have primarily market rate rents. And depending on the unit types, if they're, you know, studio, one bedroom seatbelt will, will of course make the range of of rents as well. So. It's, as developers bring those online, we don't know exactly what the rents will be. But again, I just want to say that they're not necessarily required to be low income or or below market rate rents. One thing I also forgot to mention too is, in addition to the Martin Way East project that has sustainability designed into it, the first project I mentioned was the work live. Units, the Serenity Apartments on Carpenter Road also have done the same type of things too.
Great, thank you. And hope, and hope, I love to see the retail spaces at the bottom, on the bottom floor. I think it's an opportunity for us to think about. Quality services and quality food points as well. So.
Have we? Done any analysis with all of the multifamily we're doing? On what it will do in terms of population shifts within the city?
The, so. All of our population projections and our are are based off of our land. It's all tied together. So as these land use range of densities develop. We do have a basis of planning areas within the, within our conferency plan system. So we have several sub planning areas. Those planning areas are based off of. Elementary schools within the North Hurson School System. And so as we look at at the sub, a planning area basis, so like, for instance, the Hawks Prairie area, which is a northeast area. We also, we would do our conferency plan updates. Coordinate with school district staff to make sure our land use projections, they're aware of our projections and ever sharing notes so that there's some. Level of coordination and anticipation of future growth. We are getting ready to start that again. We have the twenty twenty five Growth Management Act comp plan updates due. And so we're going to be starting that full uh uh update process in the next year. And that's also an opportunity to look at. How our projections bear to what actually was built out in the ground. So we'll be reaching out to school district staff, the planning staff. To start that process in the next year in anticipation for our twenty twenty five update.
Hey, Rick. Would you mind just spending a minute on some of the things that we've rolled out to to kind of mitigate the market rate and and things that we've incentivized for developers to? To bring in some kind of below, some below market rate units?
So yes, we have, we've initiated a couple of things. About a year ago, the city council adopted the Housing Action Plan, which has a whole litany of list of actions that the. The city and the region could consider taking to try to achieve all ranges of housing from emergency shelters all the way up to market rate. And some of the implementation measures we've have undertaken is our our pre-approved ADU program. That's an idea to try to get smaller spaces. Property owners could invest in their property and and build an ADU. They can have it for a family member or rent out to somebody. And trying to get some more lower, lower rate. Housing out there. We've also, and the council's also adopted a fee waiver for any developer, whether it be a nonprofit or a private developer. Fee waiver of building and certain. Fees related to the building permit process. If they include low income housing. So we're trying to create an incentive base for for the development community to also participate in that process. We've also looked at. Trying to incorporate other, our our infill densities, our duplexes and triplexes and. Fourplexes and try to again, create more variety. And so that was something also that the council adopted is a consolidation of our low density. Zoning districts into one that would allow some of that infill development occur, as long as it's designed properly to fit in character with the surrounding neighborhood. And then the other thing I didn't mention in this, in this project is. There's also a a a type of unit that's missing in our market, which is the condo unit. We do have two projects that are. Proposing condominiums, which there are ones, I think, twenty two units and the other ones around, around that same size. And it's, it's a challenge because a condominium unit is another thing in. Ownership that is a, is a either a downsized opportunity or an early entry into the market. And trying to facilitate more condominium is also a focus of the city. And in the coming years.
So Lacey is growing. By leaps and bounds. And I think these ones are. Projects that are, that are in the pipeline. We, we had a really full. View of this a couple Thursday nights ago, and I I think I counted somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred and nineteen units that that are. That are ready to go. And then I couldn't remember the the number for the ones that are in the pipeline to getting ready to go. So. You know, we're, we're trying to do everything we can to add to the community to, to, you know. Have that retention and and have this be the kind of a destination place to live. It it's working really well and the the city. Under Scott's management and under Rick's development. Has, I think, almost doubled in value in the past. Fifteen years? Okay, ten years. So we've doubled in ten years. So that we have. You know. There's a saying that in church, if if you're not making room for new people, you're not having church. You're just having a holy huddle. Right? And so I feel that way about the community. If we're not making room for new people, now make no mistake, there's going to be a time that we get built out. There's, there's, there's no two ways about it. But if we're not making room for for new people in our community, then what are we really doing? And so the projects that 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 Rick's team has has put together and and the, the. The planning and development that that they've done it and the way they've gone about it is, in my opinion, truly impressive. And, you know, good job, Rick and Scott. For, you know. Growing the city in a way that that looks and appears to be. You know, going to be in in our, in all of our best interest, I think. And so thank you for your, for your presentation. Moving on to our next agenda item, and we have a North Thurston Public Schools update, school construction and. We're Troy Oliver.
All right, you ready? Malcolm? All right. So, yeah, great opportunity for us this evening to share with you some things we got going on in North Thursday Public Schools in terms of construction projects. I'm all, almost all of this, if not all of it, is tied to our two thousand twenty bond that we passed, which is an eight year. Bond and we are really busy right now with going through all of the projects. So you can see it a pretty exhaustive li- list. The two biggest ones are the River Ridge High School Modernization, which just started this summer. Camatchan, which is about a year and a half in. We've worked on secure entrances and design features. Our completed seven sites and we're continuing that work to make sure that we do have secure entrances at all of our twenty four school settings. Working on mechanical system upgrades at Meadows, Seven Oaks and Horizons. Also, those same three schools have had roof replacements. We did have some issues with some supply chain, but we just finished those roofs up about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, just in time for the weather to. Truly change. One of the slides that Rick shared reinforced for me the need for the new roof at the service center. So that is, we're going out to, actually, we've, we've got a plan to get that done this, starting this spring. So that's really exciting for us. The Armack, the Rajmont House Activity Center, for those of you that been in the community for a long time, the old Bally's. Working on some improvements on the south end of that property. New CTE Greenhouse in Esqually, Envision, our, our new. Career Academy, some CTE classrooms inside of improvement, site improvements there. Some CTE upgrades for auto lifts for those programs at North Hurson and River Ridge, as well as. Some portables for the project. At River Ridge High School for the full re- full remodel, doing some heating upgrades at the Koval Center for the Performing Arts. Stadium lights will be upgraded to better light the field. Timberline High School lighting fixture and controls designed within the school, it needs to be upgraded. And then some parking lot improvements at Ri- River Ridge, Aspire, Camatchan and Esqually to really. Where possible, separate the parent pickup and drop off from our, our school buses and really make those safe. Safe places for all of our kids and families. So to the, the Camatchan Middle School Modernization, some, some pictures here. This school is originally constructed in nineteen ninety two. So this is the, the site that Dean, Dean pulled up. So this is the the site that Dean Dean pulled up some old archive pictures for. So this is what the original Kamachan looked like back in ninety-two. Um talk about growth. That was College Street back in the day. Um quite a quite a bit different um from from then till now. Um that's the uh that's the original um entrance at Kamachan Middle School um all the way um up until the modernization. And this is a picture I actually went out and took today and what the new entrance is going to look like. And it actually is coming out, coming together really nice. The uh there's some internal uh pictures of the new administration reception area. That was the first stage of the project is the new administrative area and a library. Um we are going to transition our staff into those spaces um between uh Thanksgiving break and winter break. Again, some uh additional pictures of uh the new office area. Um this to the left is uh will be the staff, staff room, staff lounge. And then this is the old gym entry um before modernization began. Um if you are familiar with that campus, there was a a space between the existing building and the gymnasium and a breezeway. That will all is all um currently being enclosed um to make a secure entrance and a se- a separate entrance for community use to get into the gym. Um as well as the music classrooms that are down on that direction. So this is what it's a look looks like uh recently. Um the other piece we're working on there is some some I work on the fields. The fields directly behind the gym um were uh in the winter time. Completely unusable. They were um you would see ducks and geese out there. That that field did not drain at all. We took about twelve inches of topsoil off of there, laid down in a completely new drain field, put in an entirely new irrigation system and brought in. Um about twelve inches of new topsoil that will um that will drain and make that usable for not only our students, but the community um year round. And that space now looks like that. We hydro seeded it and it's it's coming along just really nice. We're we're happy about that work. So the River Ridge High School Modernization um has just started again this last uh this last summer. So again, this is an overview of the River Ridge um campus. You can see here the the main part, this football field and the tennis courts, et cetera. Um I want you to pay attention to this little area right here, which is a parking lot, because that's one of the first areas that we're spending some time on. Again, doing a remodel, the first phase of the project is um working on parking back here. And then also working on enclosing the area from the auxiliary gym, which is recently built to the main gym and the pool area. Enclosing that area and adding um a weight room. You can go, you see that here in a in a moment. So this is the what it looked like just as we started the project. You can see back here, they've um taken out the fields and started. That's a staging area to to do a lot of the work that um will be happening over um essentially the next five years. Um this is the area I just highlighted. This is a new entrance that will come into River Ridge High School off of Host Street. So that is um well underway and will be um completed before long. And then um again, another uh picture of this this work done between the tennis courts and the track to um create a a separate entrance off of Host Street. This uh slide here is early in the summer. Really, the first thing we had to do is bring in school utilities. That little line right there, you can see is just dirt stacked up, essentially trenched out to bring in the new utilities um to to really start the entire project. This is a view um of the parking lot when you first come in. This is the Ox Gym. This area right here is where we are in the process of beginning to build um out that um essentially tunnel from the existing pool and gym. Out to the Ox Gym, so people don't have to go outside. This is an artist rendering of what that's gonna look like. What it's all done, completely enclosed in between the the main building and the the Ox Gym. Again, with the weight room um out front here and add to that overall space for our our students and again, community use. It's a picture of the same general area. Now moving on to uh some modernizations um versus priority schools. We have um so the Kamachan and and uh River Ridge are our major modernization schools. Our priority schools, the schools I talked about earlier, uh Meadows, um Horizons and um. Seven Oaks. So the you can see here, we completely new roof that we put on there, membrane roof. Um really durable and we're really um feeling good about uh those being completed now as we've headed into the rainy season. Um that's this is the Seven Oaks, same same thing. Um for those of you that drive up and down College Street, the roof there looks much like the one out in Mountain View. So it's very, very similar. We're using the same product in the last um few times. And then Horizons is the other school that about a year and a half ago, we completely did redid their roof. And uh we've replaced the boiler. So some infrastructure pieces that are happening with our priority schools. And this is again at at Horizons Elementary School. Um the last thing I want to highlight this evening is work um planned for the uh Family Youth and Resource Center. Again, this is the old Bally's site. Um um on the RMAC, we are um in the process of getting ready to go out to bid to have um complete modernization done in the south end of that site. Um currently, um our uh Family Youth Resource Center is housed there. That will be completely upgraded for our our students that come and um come in there and receive services. Also, the community users that come in there and provide our services to students. Also, um it is, we are currently housing um the South Sound Reading Foundation. So we're gonna upgrade um the portion of the facility that um they are in. As well as um the area between the gym that was remodeled nearest North Hurson High School. And um the where the fire center is, that area in between is district storage, and we'll continue to upgrade that. And then probably the most exciting thing about this entire project is the entire upstairs is going to be um turned into the new uh new location for the Ignite Family Academy. Which is currently housed the Bauer Learning Center, serving about a hundred students. We're gonna build capacity so they can um serve um oh over two hundred students and families. On the upstairs portion of uh of the RMAC. So with that, are there any questions? Yes.
First off, is the Kamachan Field lit? Is there lighting installed in either of those fields?
Lighting in any of our middle school sites.
That are there any plans to do so or?
Not not currently. Um and up till this, the the putting the field and turf field out at Timberline High School. Um Sauson Stadium was the only facility in our district that did have um lighting. So now Timberline High School with turf field has lighting. And then River Ridge High School is part of this project will also have lighting with it. So.
That's great.
Heading that direction.
The other question I had is what's the distinction or difference meaningfully between the lead gray and the reflective gray roofs?
Why? Great question. I probably should ask Dean that question. I I don't know if it's just aesthetics or it actually has a function. I I can't tell you that for certain.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that Timberline Field, we were able to do that during the COVID shutdown um because of what was going on. And um that project was completed what a year in it before expected. But it is great to have another turf field with evening lighting available for all the activities. Yeah, especially after daylight savings time.
Is South Sound Stadium still the only stadium that had well that has seats for patrons to watch games? You you can't do that at Timberline?
We have a small bleachers at Timberline. I'm not sure if you've been there recently, but we have uh bleachers there. They're not covered. And um doesn't have the um I would say like concessions and the um restrooms and things that we. Our intention is to still host all the football games and the larger gatherings at Sauson Stadium. But it is nice when we have conflicts to have that other field available um for soccer games and things like that.
Is there a plan to upgrade that in the future, having Timberline having their own covered stadiums? No?
Not currently. Um the River Ridge Project will also, when it's completed, have a turf field with lighting and similar stands to what we have at Timberline.
I had I had a question about um the Family Youth and Resource Center, by far my favorite place to give to. Um how many people does that serve?
There are hundreds of families that come through. They're on a on a annual ba- on a annual basis, rotating basis. And we serve all of our students um there who receive and Mc- or identified as McKenney Vento or or homeless in in some capacity. Um other families, um food dependent, um clothing dependent, some of those pieces. Um so yeah, it's a a lot of families and a lot of need in our community that's being served out of that facility.
And everything is donated by the community. So when we're handing out coats, it's because our community has donated those coats and other supplies. Um we do deploy all of those resources back out to the schools because we know that families have transportation issues. So a lot of the staff at the Family Youth Resource Center are itinerant staff and go out and and serve in the schools.
I like it.
I I think it the watching all of the construction piece by piece is really exciting and it's really wonderful. But I do want to say that being a uh building leader or a staff inside of a construction building and education is extremely difficult. So as much kindness as we can give to those principals and staff in those buildings, it's completely warranted.
Hundred percent agree.
And in the end, it it really works out well. I've seen what the finished product looks like at North Thurston High School and it's absolutely fantastic.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good thing to 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 kind of state. We did it Timberline, then we did it Thurston, now we're at Rivers. We we probably mastered the program of how to keep things moving while kids are in class. Those portables, I mean, unfortunately, that's that's the main way we can keep people educated right during those times. But it's 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 an eyesore for a while. But when it's done, like you said, the the end result is amazing. Cause my oldest son went through Thurston when they had the portables. And to the day, he's like, that's not my school, Dad. I was like, yeah, it is. It looks different, but that's just cool. Yes, it's fun going through the process, but the end product is obviously the best thing we can we can hope for. It does look out. It looks great.
Well, to Graham's question earlier, I know that these projects that we just got an update on are in process or built. But is there anything in the like the comprehensive plan for the district that like building future schools, building new schools? And I'm assuming it's further out, like years out in the future. But what's the what's the draft plan?
So with the current current bond, those are the that's the pretty much the list of packet packages that that bond is going to to cover. Our our next um scheduled bond would be in twenty twenty-eight. At that time, we have um our the highlighted um priority schools are in need of a major remodel. So we're doing, they they're about thirty years old. They're still very similar to the timeline is um Ridge and Kamachan. We just didn't have the bu- the capacity to do a complete remodel. So we're going to keep them what we refer to as safe, warm and dry. They will be up for major remodel. And then we're also working with our capital facilities plan, working with the city in terms of the growth. And right now it looks like we may need an additional elementary school.
The other um reason for us to wait is we always try to make sure that we're um. Accessing all of the resources that are available to us. And those three schools qualify for state match, which reduces the tax burden on on members of our community.
Is there still a shortage of bus drivers? Are we still dealing with that?
Troy, you want to take that one?
So um yes, a shortage of bus drivers, but we are in significantly better place than we were last year at this time, especially as we headed into the winter where we were canceling routes. Knock on wood, we haven't had to cancel a route this year. We're fully staffed with our drivers. And when we do have absences, we're able to. The the team's gotten really good at being creative and making sure all routes are covered. Um I think that's a common, that's a result of combination of the effort of transportation leaders around getting out. They were present in a variety of community events, um whether it be the fair, making face-to-face contact with people, getting people into the program. We have some, um we provide all the training for to get their CDL. I do. So we've done some pieces around that. Um and then also our communications department just pushing out information into the community, letting them know that that is something that would um is an opportunity for a career for someone that that chooses that. So so far, we're we're in really good shape. And I think it was a a result of a lot of hard work and effort um by a variety of different people in our district to get to that place. So we're getting our kids to and from school.
Yeah. So if you're interested, Ed, come on over.
We'll train you up.
I don't know if I have the patience for that.
Okay, well, it looks like um we have reached uh pretty much the end of our agenda. I would, you know, thank you guys all for being here. And uh well, actually, Dave, you have any closing remarks?
Uh I just want to say I I really enjoy these meetings. I'm sure that all the board members do, because it it does, it says something when you work together with the community. Cause you guys have a vision on how many people come to the area. We have to have a vision of how to educate those students and 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 going forward. So this meeting is very important, this and the other one we have uh twice a year. It's important for all of us, because we were we are building the future of what Lacey holds. You know, and so I think if we didn't work together, we'd have a lot of holes that we couldn't fill with each other. So I do appreciate these meetings. I'm sure the rest of the board has the same sentiments. And we look forward to the the future with you guys.
Okay. Well, uh with that, then uh it looks like we have reached the end of our agenda. Thank you guys all for being here. I thank you guys for working with us and collaborating with us and sharing what you guys have, so we can share what we have, so we can build a stronger community together. That's what it's really all about. And so uh with that, uh if there is. Nobody who has anything else, then I will call this meeting a.